Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the co-star, the official newspaper of the Borough of Belmar and the Asbury Park Press on December 2nd, 2020. A notice of this meeting was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. This meeting will be run just like any other council meeting. Our multimedia director will be the Zoom administrator throughout the meeting. You will still be able to comment during the public comment sessions. When the time comes, you will click on the raise hand button or dial star nine if you are here by phone. Our multimedia director will then unmute each person one at a time so you may speak. When it comes to the public comment sections, please remember to state your name and address before speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, April, and thank you, everyone, for joining. If you could join me in saluting the flag of our great nation. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I could just have a moment of silence for our troops, their families, all our first responders, everybody that's still dealing with this pandemic. And two outstanding people that have passed since our last meeting, Joe Neilon, who was a 30-year DPW employee of the Bellmar, and Robbie Roper, who was an educator and loved the kids at Bellmore School, even after all his difficulties that he had. He was always down at the school, and our hearts go out to them. Thank you. All right, we'll move into workshop. If everybody sees tonight, we are adding a resolution. It's a last-minute resolution, but it's one that that I think needed to be put on tonight. We finally worked out with the new company that we're dealing with using for our beach badges this year. And with all petitions and all the people that talked to us at the last meeting, we are going back to the season beach badge for disabled for $30, same as it always was. We finally were able to work it out and so that we could do that. And I didn't want to wait till next meeting to put it on so that we could start it tomorrow. And everybody that has, anybody that has already paid for a season badge, we're going to get them reimbursed. So I, we want to, we want to start it tomorrow. So, you know, I know it's a last-minute resolution, a last add, but it just worked out this morning. So if anybody has any questions on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brennan.
I just wanted to say thank you. I'm thrilled that this is happening. This is, you know, I really appreciate all your efforts and Councilwoman Juan's efforts to, to make this happen. You know, the community expressed a need, and, you know, with our first answer, there was some concerns. So I think the way you're handling this is really very well done, and I really appreciate it on behalf of the residents who have expressed their concerns. So, thank you.
Yeah, there was a lot of, a lot of people that spoke at the last meeting that, you know, you really take into consideration things that we didn't think about, about, you know, standing in line for, for badges or, or, you know, not waiting to go on the beach. So, you know, we're just going to go back to the way it was, and thankfully, we had Bridget Doudas working out with the company so that we could, we could put this back in place. So it's on tonight. I know it wasn't listened to the agenda. You know, we always get hammered for last-minute resolutions, but I thought it was that important to put it on so we could start it tomorrow and get these people reimbursed. The other thing I want to bring up is there's been a lot of emails back and forth on all of our summer programs. You know, the junior lifeguards and the camp that we run, summer camp. And we are still in the midst of this pandemic. We still have to deal with what, what the governors, all the governors' emergency orders that come out. So, and we're watching it very close, but I just want to let everybody know that we are, we definitely want to get back to where we were. And hopefully, as we're coming into April and May, there could be some changes from the governor before we try to put things in place. Because if we put things in place right now, it's going to be very, very limited to what we could do. And if we come into April or May, I think that, and we have to have limited programs so that we conform to what the governor has. I think that there'd be some, some of the residents that won't be able to get in would be, you know, still upset. But I think that as we go through a couple more months, we're going to see what the governor comes out with. But believe me, we want to get these programs up and running for our kids, and we're looking at everything that we can possibly do to get some of these, all these programs up for the summer. So we're conscious of what's going on, and we're just waiting for some direction as this pandemic moves forward and as the vaccines come out and see where we're going to be at in April, May to make our adjustments to where we need to make them before we set everything up. So, and I know we've had a lot of emails. I think we had a petition come in April? No, not on that. But I know there's a lot of emails back and forth on that, so I just wanted to bring that up so we bring everybody up to speed on the council that we, if we were able to do it, we certainly are going to do it. So. And the other resolution that we have, I know there's Resolution 2163 with appointing the members of the planning board. They were already on the planning board after talking to Doug Kofax, our planning board attorney. We just had to switch to the members around. One was Mike Campbell, the other one, Bill Lindsay. They were put in a wrong class, so that Resolution 2163 is on for tonight. So, but they were already on the planning boards. We're just switching their classes. And I think that's all that we got on the resolution. Everybody have any questions for workshop before we move on? Okay, everybody good with everything? All right. So we'll move on, April. Somebody else? Oh, Pat?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mark, wasn't unmuted. I just have a question about 63, about the Resolution 63. Perhaps you can explain what it means, what this resolution means and how you're changing their designation?
It was brought to our attention that, because the planning board has different classes through a state law of different classes of people, whether the residents, borough employees, and so it was brought to our attention that Mike Campbell, it was in, in the wrong class of, of, of a member. So we talked to Doug Kofax on the planning board, and he just said, you know, if you switch to two classes, you're fine. So we talked to Bill Lindsay, we switched him into, what is it, April, Class 4?
Yes.
Yeah, we switched him to the Class 4 and just switched Mike Campbell to the, to...
The Class 1, the mayor's designee.
Yeah, Class 1. So, by the state statute. So it was brought to our attention and straightened that out. You know, we talked to him, and so we're making that change tonight. It's not that we're adding planning board members, but we're just switching them, switching your classes, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? All right, moving on, April petitions?
Yes, I received one petition from Nicole Pika regarding reinstating reduced season badges for disabled people.
Okay. And we're doing that tonight. All right, and we're going approval of minutes.
I have a motion to approve the February 2nd, 2021 minutes.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Hi. Okay, reports of council, Councilman Carvelli.
Thank you, Mayor. It's another light week for my report. The planning board didn't have any applications, so that meeting was canceled last Monday. The finance committee, that also has not met since, since our last meeting. And the BVP, they're still on pause, but we do have some informal conversations that are ongoing. So, yeah, as far as anything from me, there's not much to report. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman McCracken.
Thank you, Mayor. The housing authorities, the next meeting is the first to me, the first Monday in March. I actually think this year it's March 1st, so that meeting will be held virtually at 5:15. And the Shade Tree Commission meets virtually tomorrow evening at, at 6:00 PM. So no report from the Shade Tree, but at our next council meeting, I'll have a report about that meeting. I think we should also bring up, Mayor, that, just, you know, remind all of our residents that there is no St. Patrick's Day parade this year at Bellmar, regrettably. But our job as council is to make sure that we keep our residents in our community as safe as possible. I do know that a lot of residents are planning to keep, quote unquote, "the tradition going" on what has historically been a parade day. And I just think, you know, we need to remind everybody that there is a global pandemic going on. People are losing their lives from it. Although over a million people in New Jersey have received the first, the dose of vaccine, vaccination, and the number of hospitalizations and the trends are going down. You know, we're not there yet. We're not in an environment where, you know, this is certainly behind us. So, you know, just remind all of our residents, you're planning something to commemorate what has historically been Parade Day in Bellmar. Follow all state and federal guidelines. Be safe. Don't have large gatherings. And, you know, please remember that we're in the middle of a pandemic and, and, you know, we don't want any events to be held in town that would be known as super-spreader events where we're, we're putting the lives of our citizens in danger. So just remind that, everybody. I know we have another meeting before the parade, before what would have been Parade Day, but, you know, I hear people are starting to think about that now, and we really need to exercise caution and be very careful.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to echo Councilman McCracken's comments. I mean, if the Bellmar-St. Patrick's Parade, what turned into a super-spreader event, that would be a bad thing, and it, and it wouldn't end this year. So really, follow Mr. McCracken's advice and, you know, just be smart, be smart. We've made it this far. You just got to keep toughening it out till everyone, enough people have had their shots and the numbers have gone down. They're going down. It's all very encouraging, but we're not there yet. Okay, as rest of my report, the environmental commission had a meeting last week on Thursday. They are still looking, they're presenting the environmental resource inventory to the planning board, and they're looking to set up a chance to show the same thing that they showed Mayor and Council to do the zoning board as well, just so everybody's familiar with the document and everybody who needs to be able to use it knows where it is. That's all very encouraging. And I guess the only other thing I wanted to say is happy Mardi Gras. I mean, there's no parades in New Orleans either. They're not having any parades, but I will say, and I'm very impressed, the people in Bellmar are doing the same kind of thing that the people in New Orleans are doing. Their call, they, because they have no floats to decorate, they've decorated their houses all over the city, hundreds and hundreds of houses. They're calling it Yardy Gras, and some of the stuff is really quite amazing, very creative, very artistic. And I like how some of the residents of Bellmar, some of the businesses are trying to organize a COVID-compliant kind of St. Patrick's Day event to go inside with when the parade would actually be. And I really think that's, I like the effort. I like the effort that people are making to try to have things be as normal as possible, even when they can't be. It's a really good sign, and I think next year is going to be a completely different story. All right, so that's my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's pray, let's pray, Tom. It's a different story next year. Council President Juan.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank you and Tom Brennan, Bridget, everybody who worked hard to get these beach badges for the disabled back. I hope everybody's happy. I know we, everybody worked hard on this, and I'm sure it'll be a success this summer. Thank you very much. My ADA meeting is coming up on the 25th of this month. Also, I have a scooter available if you have foot surgery, and you know the scooter where you put your foot up and you can scoot around. I have one available if anybody's having foot surgery. You can, you can borrow it. So just contact me at my email from the town. And that's about it for me. Again, rec, as the mayor had said, nothing happening right now, but we're looking forward to the kids at least will be able to pay, play tennis this summer. We're going to do the tennis courts over. They'll have an outlet to play tennis. The basketball courts are ready, so at least we have that. As far as the beach, like the mayor said, we have to comply with the governor, and hopefully by the summer, things will get better and we can open up and get back to some kind of normal, whatever that's going to be. And that's it. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Just a couple of things I have. I mean, DPW, we've been, as everybody knows, we've been having snow, ice storms and everything. DPW's been doing a great job getting everything cleaned up. We got another one coming Thursday, it looks like, but they're working hard, keeping, trying to keep everything cleaned up. And the other thing DPW's doing is they have two of the awnings done down at the marina. So if anybody drives through, they could take a look at the, the new awnings, and we're doing it in-house to save a lot of money. And they did a great job on the first two, and they're working on the next couple. So hopefully by summer, we'll have all 11 done. But, yeah, it's going to really spruce up the marina a little bit because those awnings that were down there were, were had holes in them and were really falling apart. So that'll make the marina look nice. Other than that, I attended the library meeting, and I know Louis wants to come and talk about what, what the new, what the new protocols are for the blind for the library. He's got some exciting news to tell everybody about things that he has set up with the state for Braille reading and the sight impaired people. So he's going to be getting that out, and hopefully we can get that out all over town. Fred, I think he, one of these meetings, he's going to come and explain everything. But, you know, the library's doing a lot of great things, and if you can go online and get one of their library cards, it's just not a library card for, for getting books or anything like that. It's, it's the whole, you know, between the, everything that they have to offer with those library cards. And I'm, I'm pretty, I think you can get them online. You just have to go online to the Bellmore Library and, and sign up for one of those library cards. But they got so many great things, and I know he talked about even with the high school students that have prep work to do for SATs, they have that free online. So he's getting that out to all the high school kids, and the library's doing a lot of nice things during this pandemic. So if anybody can go on and check and see what they got, Louis will be giving us an update shortly. But other than that, I think that's all we have. Ed, aren't you going to bring anything else up? I think that's, there's always so much going on, but, so that, that's my report. All right, April, we'll move on to public session on the resolution items.
Please remember that this is on the resolutions only, and please state your name and address before speaking.
Okay, stand by. And coming to Mr. Eugene Kramer, stand by, please.
Eugene Kramer, Fourth Avenue.
Hi, Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, good evening. On the resolution agenda there, there's a resolution granting Monmouth County the right to do aerial mosquito control. Can you give us some idea of what the scope of that would be? Would it be helicopters, drones, what have you? I know that, I guess about every year, we have a similar resolution, but I've never gotten any notification, and quite truthfully, I've never seen any aerial application here.
Yeah, Mr. Kramer, I think we, we do do this every year, and it's a countywide program. And probably why we don't see the helicopter coming in spraying in Bellmore is because probably we're at a low risk of, of the mosquitoes. I guess, you know, some of these towns in Monmouth County have a higher risk than we do, but it's just that, you know, we're part of the, we're part of the Monmouth County, and I guess if we do have the, we do have a problem. They have truck-manned spraying, and I think they do have helicopter spraying.
Yeah, okay. I know there's other locations that would be practical. I guess, I guess if there was any application to take place in Bellmar, I guess they're supposed to notify the police department. Would we get a code red message if that was to occur?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't ever remember them notifying us that they were coming in to do any kind of spraying, but I'd have to ask the chief, and I'm not sure she would know that. But if we did get any, any kind of notification that they were coming in, that'd probably be a really great idea to put it out in a code red so everybody knows it. So, you know, we'll, we'll put that on her list if, if she sees that, if she's getting notified that it's, they're coming in, we'll try to make sure we get everybody notified that they are.
Yeah, okay. I just want to say I do appreciate those emergency communication notifications and, you know, whether it's public works, flushing water lines, or road closures. I find those very useful. I do have one comment to make, though, and I think a change has to be made. It has to be updated, the code red messages. There's a voice prompt that says, you know, at the end of each message, it says to press any button to repeat the message. Can we have that voice prompt changed to a different voice? Perhaps the police chief or one of the dispatchers?
Okay, yeah, we'll look into it. I'm, I'm not sure what the voice is, but we'll take a look and see if we can put it to somebody else.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Mr. Kramer. Thank you very much. I've also made that note. I want to share it, please, stand by. And go ahead.
Shari Russo, 1218 Briarwood Road in Bellmar. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Would this be the time to ask about the petition that you just spoke of, or is that at a different time? I was unsure.
Well, we do have a resolution that's going on, so, yeah, you could speak, that, no, that was about the beach badges, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so you can speak about that, sure.
Speak about that now?
Sure, go ahead.
My confusion on that with what you said, I just caught you quickly there, I guess, while I was writing down. Will the beach badges be going back to a fee?
It's going to be, just, just as we always done, it's a $30 fee for a season beach badge.
All right, $30 fee.
Just as we always have over all the years, it's going to be the exact same way this year.
Right. And, and this year, you could buy that badge on, online and at Borough Hall both, is that correct?
No, you got to come into Borough Hall.
Oh, only at Borough Hall?
We're going to do it manually now, so the, just like years and years past, just come into Borough Hall and we'll, we'll do it manually.
All right, I wasn't sure if something changed due to the rest of it. Did, the rest of it staying, you could buy either way, right? The rest of it staying where I could buy a seasonal beach badge online and a Borough Hall, right?
Right, correct.
Okay, I was just a little confused on what you said. Okay, that was my question for right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And a moment, coming to Nicole Pika, stand by.
Hi, it's Nicole Pika, 302 Ninth Avenue.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you turn down your volume, please, on your speakers, please, Nicole?
Let me turn it off. All right, is that better?
Yes, that's better.
So, first I want to thank Tom and Pat and Ed for helping me get this done with the beach badges.
Sorry, I lost her. One second. Sorry, Nicole, I lost you. Could you go ahead again, please? One second. Nicole, are you there? Hold on. Going slow with Zoom, stand by. Nicole, can you unmute yourself? One moment. Nicole, you there? Can I mute yourself, please? Okay, Nicole, you can raise your hand again. We're going to go back around. I'll put you in rotation, and we'll try to find you again after. We lost another hand of another Nicole. Hold on, please.
Hear me?
Up there she is. There we go. Now we got you. Good job. Thank you. You can go ahead, please, sorry.
Did everybody hear my thank you?
No.
Did you get that?
No, we lost you before that.
My question is, if people don't want to buy a season and they're going to come as a disabled person for a day, are they going to be given a discount?
No, they only get the discount on the season badges, just as we always done.
Well, what if they're not coming for the season? What if they're coming for the day? Veterans and military are getting on for free. What are we doing as disabled that necessarily don't live here or don't come every single day or, you know, come for the weekend? Are they being given any sort of, in the military?
We listened to all the issues that, that going to the booth wasn't an option. So we went back to the, the way we always did it with the, with the season badges. So then that's, so we're going to do it exactly the same as last year.
Right. It wasn't an option, though, if you were doing it. It wasn't...
Yeah, but listening to everybody that, it was an issue for everybody going to the booth.
You were a resident and you were going...
But, but we listened to the, all the problems of going to the booth. So that's why we're doing it this way, so that they get a season beach badge, they don't have to go to the booth, they can just go right onto the beach. And, and that's how we're going to do it, just the same as all the summers in the past. I think we lost her again, John. Lost her again? Yeah, okay. Oh, she's back up. Stand by. Try again.
I'm back.
You're back. Go ahead.
I didn't hear what you said, Mayor.
No, I said we're going to do it the same as all the other years in the past because we listened to everybody about the issues, and we didn't, and, and myself and everybody didn't think about these issues about the disabled cannot stand in lines, they cannot go to the booth every time they want to go to the beach. So we're cutting that option out, and it's just going to be a season beach badge, this way they get the season beach badge for the, for the reduced rate, and then they could just walk right onto the beach. And so we're going back to exactly the way we did it. It worked out in years past. We had a glitch with the company when we switched over. We worked it out with the company so that we could get the reduced rate. We worked it out with the company so that we could get the, the reduced rate badges back. Because, you know, listening to everybody at the last meeting, there was a lot of different things that came up that I didn't think about and a lot of the council people didn't think about, and, and our administrative staff didn't think about, and we talked about it. So, we said, you know, we gotta work really hard to get back to the where we were and make sure that this works. So, that's what we did.
All right, awesome, very much appreciated, thank you all for your help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So much. Okay, seeing no more hands.
I have a motion to close the public session.
Motion.
Second.
Sit again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolutions as listed on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Okay, Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
Yes.
And then can I have a motion to approve the resolution we just added, which would be 2021-64, setting the fee for disabled badges? Councilman Juan?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Carvelli?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Walsifer?
We don't have any. We're going on the public session.
Okay, before we open it up to those here by Zoom, I did receive an email with questions to be read. It is from Anita Pecorelli of 104 First Avenue. First question is for Chief Scott. She states, I understand that Brandle and Belmar Bagel were broken into. Here in my apartment complex, a car was broken into, and I heard a secondhand, there were cars on Ninth Avenue this happened to. Is there an update on any of these activities that you can tell us? Also, can we get a reporting of police involved events at the council meetings in the future?
Good evening, everyone. As far as the burglaries at Brandl's and the Bagel shop, detectives were called out. Both businesses were entered through unsecure window and/or door. It is under investigation by the Detective Bureau right now, so I can't give out any further information. We do not have any suspects at this time. As far as the question on the car burglaries, none of these vehicles that have been entered, we had a handful of vehicles entered back in January. None of the vehicles were locked, there was no forced entry, obviously, because they weren't locked to the vehicles. So, the suspect entered the vehicles and looked for, you know, loose change or anything of value. Most of these are crimes of opportunity. So, we have to encourage the, the community and the residents to make sure that you are securing your vehicles at night, not leaving any valuable items in the car, such as purses, laptops or anything like that. Make sure that, that you're taking those in your homes and, and securing your vehicles at night. There is an ongoing investigation on the, on the thefts from the motor vehicles. And we did have an individual that was arrested and was linked to several of them. But again, this is also an ongoing investigation, so that is all the information I can give at this time. As far, as far as reporting to the mayor and council during the, the council meetings, I, I think that it would be good if there's any significant police events or activities that are happening in town. We also go to social media and the community policing emails. I encourage, you know, the officers, if there's anything going on that they see or hear or take reports of that we're getting it out, such as the car burglaries, we ended up putting out a message on Facebook and through the community policing emails. And we also continue to do that when we, when we hear about the scams. There's a lot of phone and computer scams, we've been putting out that information that way as well. But I can certainly, you know, every, you know, every two weeks, if there's any significant information that needs to go out to the public, as far as, you know, if we're having the car burglaries or, you know, the businesses, we can definitely get that information out to you.
Thank you.
Hey, chief?
Yes?
This is Jim McCracken, I, I just have a question. And I realize that social media is really the best, probably, and most efficient way to do it. You know, if there's an immediate concern as well as, you know, code red announcements and things like that. But, you know, the Coast Star has that police blotter, the weekly paper that comes out. And sometimes the town's put in a report, and like, sometimes it says no report submitted. I was just curious, I've never asked anybody, like, like, how does that work? Those, those, do they, they submit a request for a report and then we respond? Or is it sort of like an automatic thing, if there's?
It's an automatic thing, it goes out automatically. If, if there are any reports that need to go out, the secretary will put a report together and put that information out. Some of the information can't go out due to ongoing investigations. So, everything's looked over and it's sent to, you know, the Coast Star, the Asbury Park Press for their blotters.
Thanks, I was just curious, I wasn't sure exactly how that system worked, thanks.
No problem, you're welcome.
Her second question was, do you intend on, to this, to the council? Do you intend on leaving the plywood up on the beach playgrounds where the pirate ships were?
We're currently working on getting playground equipment to replace the pirate ships right now. We're, we're in negotiations with a company right now for pirate ships that are made out of recycled materials, sort of like the composite materials, so that they. All right, can you hear me now? We're working with the company right now in negotiations for pirate ships that are made out of composite materials, sort of like what's on the boardwalk. So, hopefully, before summer starts, we will, we will have the playgrounds up and running with the new equipment and the plywood down.
And her last question, I think you've already answered, is there any discussion about bringing back junior lifeguard summer camp and SERP camp?
Again, like I said at the top of the meeting, we're, we're paying close attention with the, what the changes are coming out of the governor's office, and we'll have those decisions late April, early May. Is that the last one?
That was it.
Okay.
Now we can move on to those that have raised their hands.
All right, stand by. Jill, coming to you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Jerry Buckafusco, 409 Fifth Avenue. I just have a few questions on the, the notice for the EMS proposal. I was looking through some of the materials, and I just was curious if it's gonna be a problem. The fact that the, the notice went in the paper only 14 days before the, the submission deadline. Because the statute says it should be at least 20 days before the submission deadline. So, is that gonna be a problem?
Well, we've already reached out to, and been in the good, in talking stages with most of the companies. And we're trying to have a direction in place by March 1st. So, I know it's a little short, but they've been, we've been in the, in talks with them already. Not about what the, what the amounts they would charge us, but explained what we needed. And so, even though it's, it's a short notice, they're all aware of it. And they're, they're putting their packets together, they, they have ample time to do that. Because we wanted some type of solid direction by March 1st.
So, you don't think that's gonna be a problem?
No, I don't think so.
The other thing, the other question I had is kind of related to that. It says that the, the notice should also state the time and place for receiving and opening the proposals. So, my question is, on February 22nd, at 10:00 a.m., are the proposals gonna be opened on that day?
Yes, that, that's, that was in, in the packet, yes.
I think it's the 26th, isn't it, Mayor?
I'm sorry, the 26th.
Oh, 26.
I was wrong, 26. That leads me to my next question. The regulations say, is this, is this something that, let me go back, is this something that the public will be able to attend in person? The opening?
Is that a public opening? I'm, I'm not sure, hold on one second, is that April?
Mayor, I don't, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, other than COVID. I mean, I don't know how you're gonna do that, I don't think we're gonna be able to do it online. Once they're open, they're public knowledge. So, but I don't know how many people can get into the room, or how are you gonna do it, so?
No, because, yeah, well, if we open them all up, we could probably just put it right up on the website.
Right, right.
Well, I, I, I'm kind of leading with that question, because the regulations say that if, you know, it cannot be open to in-person attendance, and it refers to public health reasons during a state of emergency declared by the governor, then the town has the option of broadcasting the proposal opening live at your facility. And for that to happen, it says also that the advertisement for the proposals should include explicit instructions on how the public can remotely access the opening. Okay, along with the statement that in-person attendance is prohibited due to public health-related restrictions on public gatherings due to a declared state of emergency. The bottom line is, will, will we be getting a notice that the opening will be visible via Zoom, for example, on February 26th?
Well, I'll talk to our social media director, we could always put it Facebook Live or something.
Okay, because I think that would help everyone become part of the process. I had one other question on that, and that will be the, actually two. Is there going to be, who's going to be administering the bid? Is it going to be looked at by a committee, or is it gonna be just one person? I think they, they leave it up to, it could either be the purchasing agent, or the administrator, or legal counsel. Do you know yet who is going to be administering the bid?
Well, I'm sure the borough clerk will be the one opening, and then it goes to the administrator. And then there'll be, I'm sure we have Ryan DeLea, who is one of our administrators for public safety, Tina Scott. So, I'm sure it'll be talked about with a few people to see what kind of direction we're gonna go in.
Okay, and can anyone explain, in the, in the proposal, it said, we're talking about different considerations. Right after financial support, it says, including any fuel costs required from the borough in order to ensure soft billing. Can anyone describe, I'm sure a lot of people don't understand the difference between soft billing and hard billing, and what their reference to fuel costs is?
Well, the borough, the borough gets a better rate than the public on fuel. So, I think that was put in there that if it makes a difference on the rate, if we supply the fuel for them, compared to them going to, you know, a regular gas station to fuel up. So, I think that that was put in there for that type of consideration, whether they want to exercise that or not.
But I, I was really focusing more on the soft billing, what, what does that mean?
Mr. Buck, that means like net, net billing, yeah. So, gross amount versus credit, because they're getting the gas without having to pay all the taxes.
Doesn't the soft billing mean that the, the EMS organization will just accept what the, either Medicare or the insurance company will give to them? And not seek any further reimbursement from the, from the user?
I thought it was two different things we're talking about, the fuel price, you said, the fuel soft billing. Where the soft, is, is it two separate items?
I'm only referring to what was printed in the notice, Mr. Mayor. It says, including any fuel costs required from the borough in order to ensure soft billing. So, I'm kind of wondering how, how those two things are related.
Mr. Dasty, you have an answer for that?
Well, again, I think you just said fuel costs. So, the fuel cost, the soft. I'm sorry.
I think you need to look at the notice.
I'm looking at it.
And it says, including any, you're talking about financial support. And the financial support will be including any fuel costs required from the borough in order to ensure soft billing. So, the, the notice makes a connection between the fuel costs and the soft billing. That's the only reason why I'm bringing it up, because I would like, first of all, understand what soft billing is and how the fuel costs are related to that soft billing. I mean, if you don't know, I don't know, I mean.
No, no, just a moment, are you saying you're referring to the notice to providers that was published in the paper?
As published in the Asbury Park Press on February 12th.
Well, I'm gonna have to get back to you tomorrow about it, because I don't see it on my, on my, on the one in my file.
It's actually, the one also on the website, on the town website.
Well, so, the definition on soft billing, I've given to you. I, I think, and I don't want to speak for the mayor and the council, I think it's gonna be their decision not to have fuel purchased from the, from the town. So, a lot of that might be academic. But if you give me till tomorrow morning, I'll email you or talk to you about it.
Okay, because I, I, actually, I think the fuel cost is really just a kind of like an aside issue. I mean, the soft billing is, is more of what I was trying to get at, what the difference is between soft billing and hard billing for an EMS services. I forget about the fuel costs.
Yeah, I mean, isn't soft billing like you put the bill in, but what the insurance company gets you?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's.
You're the people who wrote the, the notice and, and put out the request.
Well, that's one of the things that we're gonna make sure that it doesn't happen, that the, the balanced billing is not gonna happen for Belmar or Lake Como.
Because I looked through the, I looked through the actual request for proposal document very quickly, I'll admit. And I did not see anything about soft billing. It, it looked to me, again, very quickly, that people will just be charged for, for the service. But I won't stand on that, because I, I haven't really reviewed it 100%. But that was the only point I was trying, trying to make there. I have one other, one other comment, though, and this just relates to the, the water tank issue. Again, I'm trying to look prospectively. I know that from some of the research I did, the, the last notice of violation the town got on that for the painting was on May 15th, 2017. And what I would like to find out is, what is this administration's plan on getting the fuel tank painted? Because obviously, the prior administration, you know, for 19 months, did nothing, and it wasn't painted. And now, you're in, in the office for 26 months, and it still hasn't been painted. So, what do we have to do to resolve this issue once and for all?
I'm sure you're talking about the water tank, and our attorney's gonna tell me that I can't talk about it, so.
No, 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 this is just, I want to know what the council is prepared to do to get it painted. I'm not worried about what happened in the past. What, what, what's the resolution of this issue? So, 19 months from now, we're not sitting here saying, oh, the water tank has to be painted.
Mr. Buckafusco, I don't think the council has decided yet when it's gonna get painted, although they obviously have a mandate from the DEP. And the reason is, we're still accumulating all this information about what did or didn't happen, or what should or should not have happened, and we're gonna be consulting with the DCA. The water tank hasn't been built for long, or has been painted for a while. I'm sure it'll get painted in relatively near future, but I don't think we can give, I mean, Eddie, the administrator can correct me, obviously. I don't think we have a date certain yet until we have an opportunity to speak to DCA and the DEP and get it finalized.
With all due, with all due respect, Mr. Dasty, I fail to see the connection between whatever you do that happened, about what happened in the past, and whatever the council decides to do in the future. I mean, if the council has the money to paint the tank, that has actually no connection with what happened in the past. All right, they're two separate issues.
That's the issue, if we, if we had the money, that's the issue.
Okay, well, I just was looking at a spreadsheet, and you collected approximately $250,000 in, in 2020 on the, on your multiple unit charge to the, to the water, through the water utility. So, my suggestion is maybe get some quotes, find out how much it's gonna cost, and perhaps use that money to paint the tank. So, we're not sitting here two years from now saying the tank hasn't gotten painted. That's the only point I'm trying to make, is what, what is the council going to do? That's the only point I'm trying to make is what, what is the council going to do to resolve this, this violation that's been hanging out there? For almost four years.
All right, thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Thank you. One moment. Coming to Linda Sharkis, stand by.
Evening. Linda Sharkis, Fourth Avenue. Hello, Mr. Mayor. Um, with the storm coming up again tomorrow, I would like to understand. Are the people who don't move their cars off the street per your multiple requests getting tickets? And those that aren't shoveling the sidewalk, are they getting tickets? It's really unsafe. Um, I have a dog, we walk, try to walk a mile a day. And unfortunately, even after the snow start, stops, many of these sidewalks aren't cleared. So, you know, I'm not sure, you know, maybe we need a program for the elderly to assist them on shoveling the walks, but when you hear, when you see young people living in the houses, I can't get up, out and shovel. That's really pathetic, so.
I know code enforcement and the police department have been out there. Um, I know it was like eighty-five summonses given at the last storm, so.
Well, appreciate it because um, it's really risky and some of the streets that aren't done. For instance, around the bend on inlet terrace, you know, going into Third Avenue, it's a blind turn. So he hooves those people to do their sidewalk because walking on the street is very unsafe. So I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And coming to Sherry, stand by. Go ahead.
Shari Russo, twelve eighteen Briarwood Road in Belmar. Um, my first question is for Chief Scott. Um, can you hear me? Yes?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Um, my, I want to tell you, I think that the Belmar Police Department does an amazing job. I think that you're all wonderful. Um, my question is, how many days after a storm would it be okay to be issued a ticket?
As far for, for snow removal?
For snow removal, but ticket was issued many days after the storm and that was a little bit confusing to me. I thought by then you could put your car back on the road.
The summonses that were issued to the vehicles were the, the vehicles that were not um, dug out from the snow. The snow actually didn't stop until, I believe, Tuesday night into Wednesday. And it's uh, twelve hours from then. So we actually, it was, it was an extra day we gave people to remove the snow and remove their cars from the, from the streets before we issued any summonses.
Do, do you know what date that was? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
I believe uh, the storm was Sunday into Monday and it continued to almost Wednesday and I believe, or Tuesday evening. I believe it was uh, that Thursday, Thursday or Friday that the summonses were issued.
I see, okay. All right, and um, oh, are we still there? Sorry. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
My bad, I clicked on the wrong button. Okay, um, and my other question, I'm not sure if this is for Chief Scott or just for the council. Um, if somebody has a business and plows all their snow into the sidewalk. Are they ever then made to clean it? Um, on Sixteenth Avenue, near the um, like skateboard park kind of. Um, there was a business, I believe, there that when they plowed, they seemed to have pushed the snow across the street. And it has covered the whole sidewalk. So when you walk down Sixteenth, you then um, have to walk out into the road. Like it is a huge amount of snow, like it isn't even something that like, I could just carry my shovel down the street and dig it out. It was like the business pushed all the snow and the snow's probably up to my waist. It looks like in the shape of a snowplow. Um, I just want to call to attention that I feel like, I don't know, I mean, I'm assuming they got a summons with the eighty-five summonses that were given out. But I'm not sure, like everybody that walks there, we walked the other day, I didn't walk today. Today I just sat in the backyard, even though it was beautiful out. But when we walked the other day, like everybody's stepping out into Sixteenth Avenue. Because that's so high of a snow, I don't know if the ordinance then ever makes you shovel it. Or like do something about it. I don't know what's to be done about that.
I, I don't know if that falls under the ordinance, but I can certainly um, speak to the business owner, uh, so that doesn't happen in the future.
So the ordinance requires, as the law requires, that all commercial users have to have their sidewalks cleaned. Now, I don't know.
Not, it's not their sidewalk, it's actually Betsy Park sidewalk that they're, they're pushing the snow on.
Well, then you got to prove who did that. I mean, anybody.
I guess, well, I mean. Bye and speak to them.
Yeah, you can see, Mr. Dasty, that um, you know, i- i- it's coming straight from the business's driveway. I mean, you, it's you know, fairly clear to look at. I don't know if you drive down Sixteenth or not in your travels.
That's certainly something they should not be allowed to do and Chief Scott will be talking to them.
Okay, yeah, wonderful. I'm sure that that was just a accidental um, overlooking, I'm sure. Um, and um, a couple of other comments I have, not for Chief Scott, just for mayor and council in general. Um, upon talking about all this money that we plan on spending on EMS, I just feel it is very unfortunate. That means we could have saved our own EMS. And I think that is just, you know, horrific once again. Um, I just wanted to bring that point up. Also with Mike Campbell, as he's being changed around to different classes on the planning board, I understand by the law that that is okay. However, do you know, um, he's no longer head of DPW because of a situation that happened with a disabled person, do you know, and here we have putting him on boards. A planning board and changing classes around to see that we could fit him in. And, and I think that's kind of despicable there, you know, I mean, we have a problem with disability badges, we have a problem. You know, i- it's okay when somebody treats a disabled person badly, we reward him with moving around classes for a planning board. I think that's, you know, not very great. And my other comment I wanted to make was on the kids camp. Do you know, schools are open. Do you know, we could figure out how to open schools in Belmar. But um, and also, you know, I understand that you say it is because of, you know, state and federal ordinances. Yet other cities and towns in New Jersey are working on their kids camps. And instead of us running into a situation like we did with disability badges where we're voting on something in twenty twenty-one that we should have voted on in twenty twenty. Perhaps it would be wonderful to plan the kids camp availability ahead of time. I'm sure, you know, as you know, I don't have children, but as, you know, people with children need to make plans ahead of time and and what a price difference, you know, for a middle-class family to have their kids going to camp in Belmar. Instead of spending money to go else, spending more money to go elsewhere. And, and I believe for camps, you have to have that situated ahead of time. So I just wanted to um, address my few comments on that. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. One moment. Coming to Annette, Antoinette. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, name and address, please.
Antoinette Rossi, three oh nine Third Avenue in Belmar. Okay, so I want to thank Sherry for bringing up um, the Belmar um, camp. I know that you touched on it, but I'm, I'm wanting, I'm wanting to wait till we have an answer. Because how are all sur- um, surrounding towns already having camp? And we're not. So I know that you're just saying, okay, thank you, but I want to hear an answer. And if everybody, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of all the moms in the town, PTO. A businesswoman.
Antoinette, if you want an answer from me, if we follow the governor's guidelines for the camp. We have to have uh,
But didn't he lift the restrictions?
No, he has not lifted restriction yet. We would have a very limited number of kids at different times. We need about three or four times the amount of employees. So if you look at all the restrictions, it'd be very little, uh, a very small uh, percentage of children that we could accommodate. Um, so we're waiting to see uh, if, if this pandemic starts to slow down and he opens these things up to open it up the right way. If we set it in place right now.
Okay, go ahead.
If we set it in place right now, it's going to be very, very limited and it's going to be very costly. So we're just waiting and I think that uh, April, latest May, we, we could still set it up as long as he lifts some of those restrictions.
Okay, so Executive Order one forty-nine was lifted last July. So there were, oh, every, you know, so I don't think that, I don't know if you, if you have the facts, because it says right there that it was lifted. So, and then I'm just confused, and listen, it's like, I, I, like, I have children, but they wouldn't, they, they're aged out. So I'm just like, again, I'm speaking on behalf of the other moms and, and, and I'm, I want, you know that, that children are a passion of mine. I will do anything and I would volunteer, I'll do anything to.
Believe me, I want to open up everything as much as you do. I really do. But I, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go against the governor's orders.
But I, I don't, but I don't think it's against the governor's orders if he lifted that.
We went over them all today. We went over them today. It says, what is it? Uh, Executive Order one forty-nine. So look at that one.
Executive Order one forty-nine, correct.
That was not lifted.
Okay. Okay, so um, yeah, so you know, we have, I don't think either are going to care, but we have, you know, a petition already with over three hundred signatures and, and, and it's rising. I'm just confused because are we limit, because it's, it's mostly out, eighty percent of camp is outside, right? Um, and, but we're not limiting beach badges, right?
But eighty percent of the camp was in Taylor Pavilion.
No, it wasn't. No, 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 no. It's always outside. My kids went for the past six years, so it's always, it's always outside. I mean, if, if it rains, then it's in the Taylor Pavilion, but it's not. It's, it's mostly outside. And then the kids are in school, five days.
A plan, you have to plan for it, that it may rain.
I'm sorry, that it may rain? Okay, then.
Plan for that it might rain every day.
Yeah, but they're indoors in school, so I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm confused. I, I just, I know, like.
Well, the schools are going in and out as COVID comes in. Is, aren't the schools going remote and then back in and then remote again? I mean, because of strict guidelines that if, if, if anybody comes infected with COVID. Everybody in that camp has to quarantine for fourteen days. Camp is only seven weeks, so.
Okay, then I guess that's.
I want to get, I want to get it in, in place as much as you do. I want this, this pandemic behind us.
Okay, but so all, like, all the other towns are, they're, they're having.
I haven't seen one other town.
So I don't know what you're, like Bradley Beach was open last year for their camp. And Madison Swan was open, Spring Lake was open. I mean, it's.
Yes, so they all had it closed down because they all had COVID.
Did you read the letter that um, SEMA had um, sent out? That the PTO was behind?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Okay, what is that? I have all the moms here, I'm sorry. I'm just the spokesperson, even though I'm probably not the best at it, but so um, indoor basketball at Wall is, is in play right now. And I know that for a fact that the governor lifted.
Yes, the wall school, we have different regulations for camps.
Okay, but, okay, so.
The school has.
Okay, CDC, CDC just stated safe to have in-person school, okay.
The school is totally different than what our camps after the fallout.
Okay, but I know I said that, they're, all I'm saying that the camp is eighty percent outside. So if it rains, then how about? Right, and can kids wear masks? Uh, you know, everybody's wanting an answer here, like we don't want to say, okay, thank you.
I can't give you an answer tonight. I am not going to give you an answer tonight. If you want an answer, I'm not giving it to you. I, I said, we're watching and we're, we're working with the governor's office to see exactly what we could do this summer. The cases are going down and if he lifts some of the regulations, if we put it, I'm telling you right now, if we put it in place. We might be able to put twenty-five kids in there now and that's it. So, uh, and, and it has to be at different stages for different ages.
Then, and there was six hun- how many kids were in there? That, how was it? What is that?
It was a hundred twenty.
Oh, there was a hundred and twenty. Um.
Believe me, I want it as much as you. You could argue with me all night. You're not getting an answer tonight. You're not.
In all due respect, um, there, I don't think that you really do, because when we, I just.
Do you want an answer tonight? As of right now, no, we're not having camps. Is that, is that the answer you want me to give you? As of right, as of right now, we're not doing it.
I, you know, I'm, I voted for you, you were in my house. I, I had several people vote for you. I feel like we had that mayor's ball in September. When did the pandemic hit? It hit in March. That was six months. Why didn't we do something? I feel like because you don't, you don't, you have grown children and it's not um, prescension to you. I feel like it's on your backburn. Why aren't?
No, it's not on our backburner. We had, we had the recreation director in going over all this today. We had him in today, going over all of it, because I want this in place. Believe me, I want all of this in place. This is Belmar. This is Belmar. Belmar has all these things.
But we have, you, like, it feels like.
If you keep pressing me for an answer tonight, I can't give you one. Until we work out all the, all the logistics of it, I, I can't give an answer. We are looking to have different programs for this summer. If it's going to be camp, if it's going to be a basketball type of thing outside, if it's going to be tennis. So I cannot give you something tonight.
Now let me talk. Are you limited the beach badges that will be sold? Last year it was like overwhelming. We had more, you know, beach traffic than we ever had, so.
Our requirements for the beach are to make sure everybody's social distancing. We had drones up and we took care of that. And we limited beach badges when we needed to limit them. There is apples and oranges what you're talking about.
Those guys, okay, so, they just don't care. I mean, I'm, okay, so.
It's not that I don't care. I just told you, I want to open everything up. It's, we have to, we still are in the middle of a pandemic.
Okay, but the first six months was not a pandemic. So what, 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 what happened then that we didn't do anything? What, what's our plan?
Six months, we didn't do anything?
Okay.
I don't understand what you're talking about.
I'll tell you exactly what I'm talking about if you give me a chance. We had the mayor's ball.
There was no pandemic then.
Exactly. What did you do with the twenty-four thousand for six months? Why didn't you?
It's still sitting there.
Why is it sitting there? We had six, why didn't you do something in the first six months? What are you going to let it sit there till our kids are like a hundred? Why? Let, let's do, I want to know what we're doing with it and I've asked hundreds of times. What are we doing with the money that I helped raise and that I put a great portion of money into for my children? I don't want it to age out. What are we doing with it? For the first six months, there was not a pandemic and there was still like, I don't know, I don't know. Well, let's get, when, who's the committee? Who's going to decide what we're doing with that and when are we going to decide?
You could make all the suggestions and we, we'll decide what to do with it. It's like, I was waiting for suggestions.
Really?
Suzanne gave us some good suggestions, so soon as everything opens up, that's what we'll be doing.
I'm sure Ed Kirshenbaum told you that when I met with him and I had a list of things and I even sent him an email that he.
Antoinette, this is, we're, we're getting off track here. You called in about the summer camps. This, this is totally different. I'm telling you right now, I'm not going to go back and forth with you. We've already been on this conversation for over ten minutes. I am not, as of right now, we are not putting anything in place. That's what I'm going to tell you.
Club outside, because youth club was canceled. What if we just have like every Saturday night, have like a youth club outside? Open gym has been canceled. I mean, we need to get our kids doing some kind of program, some kind of activities. That's why we moved to this town. You know, we are all. My kids are involved.
Yes, Jim, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So, you know, I just, this conversation and, you know, everybody's got COVID fatigue. Everybody is at wit's end. Everybody wants things to be back at normal. Uh, I, I work in healthcare, I work with seniors, I work with the disabled and trust me, I understand the frustration that everybody has in this. I, I'd just like to say, as a councilman, I would like our municipality to turn, return to normal. Would like to have the surf camp, I would like to have junior lifeguards, I would like to have the camps for the Belmar children that we've always had. Um, but I've also seen the death and the suffering that this is the laws. People, and we certainly, you know, don't want to see that happen again. So, you know, we've got to make sure this is safe. You know, one of the things that was brought up in this conversation, which I think is really interesting and is a very good point, is that schools have been dealing with this uh, crisis since, you know, the first case hit New Jersey on March fourth, I think, and the governor closed things. March fourth, I think, and the governor closed things down on March thirteenth. Of twenty twenty, um, and they are. Have become, I think, particularly when it comes to children, you know, much more experts. Than a municipal government would be and, you know, how to handle these and how to have safe classrooms and how to have. Safe playgrounds and stuff like this, I'm just, and I'm just throwing this out as an idea, listen to the conversation, I mean, I'm wondering if there's any way we can. Talk with or work with or partner with. Uh, or get feedback from, you know, the Belmar Elementary School. And, you know, maybe they would be willing to to do some programs, maybe they could do it better and maybe they could do it safer, I I don't know. Just kinda thinking out loud here, because, you know, I understand the frustration of people.
Okay, well, let me, when, so everybody knows that I've already raised almost forty thousand dollars. Personally for our Belmar bats, basketball court for our um, for our school. Okay, and so we still need to raise another twenty-five grand. Well, we did raise twenty-four grand at the mayor's ball and I said, could we put it towards that and they said, well, that wouldn't be fair because we have another school in Belmar. Saint Rose, which I don't, it's not, that's a pub, a private school, so I think we only have one school in Belmar. So if, yeah, we have, that's great, why don't we take that, those funds and and put it towards our basketball court, which I've suggested several times. And then that would, that would be an activity that I think our school. I'm on the board, I would like to, you know, approach the board with that and um, and that could be one of our activities. And it's outside, see, all you keep saying, like, you're letting all these beach cupgoers come into our beach. Out, but it's safe outside, social distance, why can't we have? Eight our kids, our kids of Belmar, our kids, not other towns, and I am a business owner also, so. And we pay the taxes here, we're worrying about all the guests coming in. For what, for what, the businesses that are thriving from it, because I didn't see, I, there was no thriving on my end. So why, why are we allowing all these outsiders to come in when we pay taxes here? And we're not taking care of our own children and it's outside, it's outside, let's take care of our children, we're not gonna worry about.
Antoinette.
Yes.
May I speak to you for a minute?
Absolutely.
Hear the frustration in your voice and everybody who's with you. And understand your frustration, as far as the basketball goes, the basketball courts, we have been talking. To a group and we're trying right now, we're in the midst of trying to put the basketball leagues back for the young kids. Over on Sixteenth Avenue, we are working on that. I hope it's outdoors, I hope we can follow state guidelines and we can have basketball at least with them. The tennis courts are gonna be done over, kids can start playing tennis. It's not a group sport, like two can play or you can have a foursome, play doubles. We have that, i- it's just so frustrating. It's frustrating for me, I have friends with young children. I know what my grandchildren went through at the beach and it's just a great place to be and we want it to happen. I, it's so frustrating for all of us. And I hear what you're saying about visitors, yeah, we're all kind of over it. And we are a little worried about what's gonna happen this summer, if they're gonna come on strong again, which I have a feeling they will. But yes, our children come first. We're going to do, Antoinette, we are going to do everything we can to get this open. And if we say maybe in April or in May, okay, let's go, that would be great, right now we're just treading on eggs.
That would be too, at that point. Like, how are you gonna get this staff?
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay, we're saying, how are we gonna get it stacked so quickly, how are plant parents gonna plan for the summer, I mean. We heard that you said to go to to the other towns, that's what. That it came back to us, like, don't, you know, we're not gonna supply, but you go to someplace, go to another town. But, you know, and the parents are working, kids are in school, we need a place for our kids to go. And it's just, um, everybody on the board unfortunately doesn't have children, like, it's just to. To me, it's like disheartening to see that none of you have children, that's not affecting you. You're gonna go what's affecting you and you know, and you know it, again, I'm.
Antoinette, that's not true, that's not true, I have grandchildren, so maybe I don't have children, I have grandchildren. I have friends with small children, Antoinette, I understand completely what it is to have your kids home all summer. Camp is the best place for them, I get it.
Right, but do your grandchildren live in?
Anything to happen to your kids, do you?
What, of course not, but they're fine, I mean, they're, they're, it's outside, they're already doing everything, my kids haven't stopped, they. They're in, they're, there's indoor sports, they, we have, because, you know, our outdoor soccer is outside, outdoor, we all are.
We got a lot of people talking and I can't, I can't. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just, again, I'm the spokesperson here, but, so all of our children, I have about eight moms here right now, okay? All of our children are in a sport out of town, so it's not like, it's just not our town that's not doing it, we're all in either Wall. Neptune, uh, Manasquan and Seager. And this is indoor and outdoor, so I'm like, I'm embarrassed to say that I'm from the town who doesn't. Care about her children and basically, that's what, I know you're all saying, we do care, we do care, but we're gonna push it off, no, let's care and let's act on.
Can't say, I can't say anymore, Antoinette, I'm not gonna argue with you, I wanna see camp open as much as you.
Okay, so we're gonna, I get it, we, I know that we don't wanna take up anymore.
It's not just me, it's not just the mayor.
And I re, I respect and appreciate that, I just, two more things I'm gonna say and then I'll I'll stop. I want to know if we can revisit this with, um. So we're gonna say, we'll, we'll email you the petition. Um, and I wanna revisit this with maybe you guys can have your own private meeting and we could come up with some more, some more answers, okay?
Good idea.
That we say, like, can we maybe revisit this in March first, like, give you two weeks to. Because then that, especially, like, I'm, like, again, I'm, my kids, they're aged out for camp, that's not an issue. But I'm I'm still fighting for the other moms, okay, but I want to see. Youth club, youth, you know, or what were they, the youth open gyms after school, youth clubs, I, do you wanna see our kids like being. Pop smoking losers, like, you know, hanging out and.
Why don't we do that, why don't we set up a meeting for March first?
For um, March first, the deadline for first aid, why don't we make it the week after and then we're.
Okay, that's fine, and then, okay, just one, 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 one more thing. I, I know that, like, and if it's a cost issue, there are so many, like, I will volunteer. All my time, anything, and then we have, just so you know, um, Brian, uh, what's. Hmm, no, 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 um. Not Erica, the other one, husband who always, oh, Conklin, he has been volunteering his time for years doing the after um. School programs, it's important for these kids to have someplace to go, so it's, if, I don't want, so I want you to keep that in the back of. Your mind that there will be, we have a lot of volunteer, parents who are willing to volunteer, they just want to get their kids out there. It's not for babysitting, I don't need a babysitter, I don't, you know, I'm not working, so it's not for babysitting. We need our kids to be together in a safe environment and with um, programs, so, okay, so we'll, if we could revisit back March, what? Six, seven?
Yeah, six to seven, seven is a Monday.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. One moment. Okay, going to Maria Stenner.
Oh, hi, this is Maria, uh, Ron Dinaro, twelve forty-six Pine Tree Way. I just, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, I just wanted to state my support um with Antoinette and other community members about summer camp and rec programs. Um, I do understand wanting to give some time to plan out how to do that safely. Um, so I'm really encouraged that you're going to have a meeting with Antoinette, I'm happy to be on that. Task force or meeting as well to um, find ways to do this safely. Um, I I'm encouraged that you said if we're able to do it, that we certainly are going to. Um, which I think is great news because pursuant to Executive Order one forty-nine. Youth summer camps are permitted to open so long as they comply with governmental guidelines. Um, and that might be what you have seen, uh, it's about eleven pages long, I can send those to you if you would like.
We already have them, we were reviewing them today.
Good, good, I hope that, um, you know, our schools, I I agree with um. Our Councilman McCracken and the fact that Belmar Elementary School has been doing a fabulous job. Um, and the way that they've been doing it is, yes, if there is a class, um, they do. Um, have to quarantine, but the truth is, is that they're inside, most of camp has been outside for these. Um, for these kids, and so I think that it's much safer even than than in indoor program. Um, and I'm ha, sure that they can give you their expertise on their protocols. Um, also, I'm a licensed clinical social worker, so I've seen how the pandemic has affected. Um, e- everyone emotionally, psychologically, um, as well as physically. And I feel like we need to do our part in making sure if we can do it safely, if there's a way, which if there's other towns. That are making that possible, then we need to be able to do that as well, we need to put our kids as priority. Um, according to the Attorney Surgeon General's report for suicide prevention last week. It says that action plans, um, states that community engagement activities. Per peer norm programs are significant in suicide prevention. So this is really important and I just stress that I think that we can. As a Belmar community, figure out creative ways to do this in a safe way, thank you.
Thank you very much. And going to Virginia, one moment please. Cancel one please. Okay, it says Virginia that you are using an older version of Zoom. Um, if you uh, sign out and update um. Uh, Zoom on your computer, wherever you're at, that might help, so I can bring you back later if you try that. But uh, right now you are not compatible, sorry about that, going to next person. I will lower your hand, Virginia, and you can try to come back. Going to Lenny, one moment please. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, state your name and address, please.
Yes, Paul Olmec, fourteen oh six Sixteenth Avenue. Uh, there's questions for the mayor, um, I'm just wondering what specific aspects of. The governor's orders pertaining to summer camps. Would you like to see rescinded um, in order for you to support moving forward? There's a lot of specific um, instruction on how they opened summer camps last year. So wha- what are you looking at that would make it uh, less costly as you said earlier?
Well. If you read the whole plan, there's, you have to set up a counselor with with ten. Uh, students, you have to have groups within that, that group, you have to have a. Uh, medical technician there or. That that uh, is controlling the group. So we normally have about a hundred and twenty kids and if we try to set it up right now, I think that we're talking about. With all the governor's orders, we'd be able to have like twenty-five. So, um, you know, we're hoping that. Before we make plans on opening anything and limit it, anything. Uh, that he loosens up, the, I mean, the, the, the numbers are going down right now. He's opened up restaurants at thirty-five percent inside. So I think within the next two months, hopefully, he's gonna be loosening it up some restrictions. And we could structure it around the loosened up restrictions, so, but we're looking at it. We were talking about it today, how we could do it, whether we're gonna run a smaller camp down in McLeary Park and have it all outside or. How we were gonna actually structure it. Um, even as far as junior lifeguard and all, all the programs, uh, we have a running club uh, and uh. That that meets once a week, so all of these things, you know, we're, we're taking a look at. Uh, believe me, I wanna put them all back in place, you know, uh, we've heard a lot of, lot of talk tonight and uh. I I can't, we can't circumvent the governor's orders, you know, we we have, we have to work with whatever the governor's putting out there. We were just hoping by now that he would start to give us guidance, it was like last summer with the opening up the beach, we didn't know till the very last. Minute that when we could open and uh, we were constant in contact with them. So, and and we still are now, so uh, we wanna, um, we were hoping that by. April earliest and we could still set everything up with that timeline. As long as we have six weeks, we can get everything in place to open up, so that, that's what we're looking at.
All right, um, I'd just like to, you know, thank Councilman McCracken for, uh, you know, seemingly being solution focused on this issue. Um, I think there are solutions, um, so, you know, if the governor's orders are walked back a little bit. Um, as you just said, then, you know, we should be able to expect summer camp for our kids uh, this year. Um, and then just, you know, with all due respect, I just wanna point out that. You know, there's a lot of parents in this town that are very passionate about this i- issue and our voters. And, you know, if summer camp weren't to happen in Belmar this year and all the surrounding towns have summer camps. You know. You know, I'd just like to say that, you know, I mean, I, I'm sure you're aware, it would absolutely uh, become a, an issue of electability for. For you in the future, uh, we are very passionate about this issue, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, looking at my list. Coming to Sherry.
Sherry Russo, twelve eighteen Briar River in Belmar. Um, one quick thing I forgot to ask the last time I spoke, I'm sorry. Um, my question is, is I've read the ordinance on snow removal. And I also reread a few times, even while we're on the call here, the code red. And I was wondering if it's possible to be a little bit clearer on whether or not you need to move your car during the snow removal? Like, it says if there is accumulation of snow, if the ordinance also says that we will go by code red. So the ordinance says we'll go by code red and then this, the code red says if there is accumulation of snow, now. I don't really know what that means, accumulation of snow, I mean, once the plow comes by, it's too late. So is it possible to state, I know the past administration used to state, move your car, you have to move it today. I was wondering if we could put that in the code red, I know that the storm is coming. Is that possible?
Oh, all right, uh, yeah, I'll talk to the chief about put that in the code red.
Okay, thank you, and the second thing I wanted to say upon listening to the people talk about the summer camps. And you talk about, um, you know, that you would have to have extra camp counselors there. I was wondering if that in any way possible, would that fall under the money that we would, we would, we would be able to apply for, for COVID? So for instance, last summer, you, I believe that we billed um. For different trash cans and different things that we needed for COVID, um, due to being a beach town. And with this camp also, if we had to have, I don't know what you said, I believe it was one counselor per ten people. Would we be able to build that under a COVID type issue? Because this is due to COVID and also because the camp is for um. Middle-class families, that would be helping middle-class families who I'm sure are struggling at a time of COVID, I'm sure. You know, different families have someone who's unemployed and that it is a financial hardship to spend more money on a different camp.
Well, first of all, the, the, it looks like the COVID money has dried up, second of all, it's not about the money. It, it's about how we could do it safely, how we can make sure our employees are protected, the kids are protected. And where this pandemic is gonna be, and not one of us has a crystal ball to see where we're gonna be at in in the summer. You know, hopefully that with the vaccines, it's getting behind us, the numbers are going down. Uh, we're praying that the governor opens up a little bit, but we are already in talks about how to open up. Scheduled, different scheduled programs like uh, uh, the basketball where we have enough people down there. To to watch the activity going on, uh, tennis. You know, the, the junior lifeguard is a good structured program. And uh, you know, we, we also wanna look at the camp, but. You know, we, we also have to worry about, still consider that we are in this pandemic and uh. I wanna do everything in our power to get back to where we're normal, where we have the children and they're all active, all their activities for the summer. And uh, we could open up Borough Hall again, but the biggest thing is, is we don't wanna open up all these and have. Be the town that ge- gets, spreads, spreads COVID, so. be the town that gets spreads spreads COVID. So, you know, we're looking at last year, I know everybody talked about the beach and how crowded it was. And the one thing that I can say, we got through the whole summer and not one of our employees were infected with COVID, even with all the people that were in town. So and that's the thing that other towns cannot say. A lot of their junior programs, they they, there was a lot of people infected, they had to close them down. So we are definitely looking at the health aspects of it. But I want to get back as as soon as we can to having all these programs back in place.
Of course, I understand that. Some of the things you said are contradictory. Perhaps it would be possible if you could maybe check and see, or I don't know if that is a specific council member under their duties of committee to check and see whether or not the COVID money is dried up, whether or not that would be applicable. I think that, you know, it's a very important issue, you know. I think that, you know, this year is not going to be the same as last year for the summer. I mean, we can see that. We see the amount of vaccinations, we see vaccinations coming in. We see things opening up more, you know, and I just feel that is this is a awful situation, you know, to say probably the money has dried up. I'm not a big one for probably, you know.
All I can tell you is this, that we can't put any more in. So hopefully we get some more money. It would be nice to get some more money, but right now we can't put anything in. Unless there's a that Monmouth County opens it up that we could put in some more money for COVID relief, we certainly will do that. But as of right now, we don't see anything coming this way with with any kind of COVID money.
All right, I do hope this gets resolved. I think this is another awful situation that's going on in town. And, you know, I feel that, you know, I mean, every week I think that maybe there's nothing to talk about at council meeting, but here we go on and on. Thank you all for
Well, it's February 16th, and we have, we have some time still.
Okay.
Okay. Jerry, you there? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Are you done, Sharon? Sorry.
Can you hear me still?
Yes, I still hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay, thank you. I had said that before, but I guess it didn't come through.
Just making sure. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank.
All right, standby. And we're going to try Virginia again. Let's hope we got her now. Standby. Virginia, are you there?
Yes, I think I'm here.
You're there. All right.
My name is Virginia Conklin. I live on 1219 Open Road.
Go ahead.
Okay, yet I am another mom calling in, and I know you're probably over this. I hear you. I completely am understanding what everyone is saying. However, my frustration comes because I feel, and this is obviously only my opinion, my feeling, that the kids' activities have been slacking before COVID. I don't even, I don't even want to talk about, oh, we can't do this because of COVID. We have not, this ski trip was undone. But nobody wanted a ski trip. Beautiful, beautiful memories and happenings for kids in our, and you know this town. Some of the kids, that's their only shot at going somewhere. That was shot down. We barely could have a baseball team. We had to go to another town to play baseball. It's like, for for me, as a mother of two young kids here, I feel like this town doesn't want to have any kid activities. I'm hearing what you're saying. I hear everybody's, yes, we do care. Yes, I have kids. Yes, I have grandkids. But your actions do not show that. So that's where I think my frustration is is coming in too. I grew up in this town. I had all the things, all the beautiful, beautiful things that kids are supposed to have in towns. And I don't think that that's happening in our town. And I feel like now we're going to use COVID as the as the excuse. I don't even, I don't even want to talk about the camp. I hope that the camp goes through for the people that need the camp. I, I, as Antonet said, my kids are also aged out of that. I want to see what, how about movies on the beach? What happened to that? We need, we couldn't, and this was before COVID. The screen broke and we didn't have enough money to have a new screen or some crappy excuse was given for that. We don't have movies on the beach. The Taylor Pavilion, I get, maybe we we don't want kids there for the camp. That's how I feel like this is going. I feel like, and I just would love for everybody to just be honest and just be like, guess what? We can't have a camp. Because my feeling is that in April and May, when we go back to revisit this, we're going to stand by the governor's code of no, we can't have it. We can have nine bazillion people on the beach, which I'm one of those beachgoers, so I'm not opposed to that. But it just doesn't make sense when we say that and we can't have activities for children. My husband is actually one of the volunteer dads, which there's millions of them, so I'm not looking for any accolades here. But he's one of the volunteer dads that go and help Barry at Open Gym. So we're we're parents that want our kids to be able to do stuff. And I hear that you're saying that you want that too, but like I said before, your actions are not showing it. Your actions are just not showing it. And I, listen to me, and I, I can bet my life when the meeting is over, we're going to be talked about as just these moms who want to come on here and bitch. And that's not it at all. We just actually want to live in the town that we chose to raise our kids in and have stuff for them going on. So if we could be on the beach at 12 o'clock in the afternoon on a Tuesday, why can't we have movies on the beach on Saturday? Like, some things just don't don't make sense. So what, when we, when I come back on March, on whatever, March 7th, we said whatever, the 8th, I would like to hear reasons that make sense, not just, oh, because of COVID, oh, no, we can't do that because of this. We did, you know, we had drones going over to make sure it was social distance. Like, I go to 11th Avenue Beach, there was definitely very, very little social distancing. Okay, so, you know, it's just, it's very frustrating. The surf camp offered to have it, no, no surf camp, couldn't have surf camp. I mean, it's just all the things. And like I said before, I think this was happening before COVID. It's almost, it's almost like, oh, well, you know what? And and where is the money, though? Where is the money that was raised? I went to half of the events that Antonet had, and we put money towards it. So where did that money go? Like, where, where, what are we doing with the all the rec money? Where does that end up going to? We can't have all these activities. Where does it go?
I can't answer that. CFO could answer that for you. I, I, I don't, I, I believe it's just sitting in surplus.
Okay, so, you know, and and great, listen, I'm, I'm very happy, you know, Pat Wong said that we have a tennis thing coming, we have possible basketball. Okay, so that's all beautiful, beautiful things. But, I mean, we don't have a baseball team. Like, I just want you guys for a second to think about how 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 it just sounds like. My son has to go play soccer in Neptune. My, my other son is playing basketball in Long Branch, uh, baseball in Long Branch. Like, there are programs that are doing it. So I'm just so confused as to why we can't do it. Yes, limited. Okay, so right now, if you you did the camp and only 25 kids can go, then that's the understanding that the parents have to have, then only 25 kids go. Why can't we do that?
No, we, no, that is one of our options that that we're going to be, if nothing changes, that's going to be one of our options to open that up to 25 kids. Or whatever we can fit in safely, that's what we're going to do. I, we, we didn't put anything in place because we were hoping that we could do more than that. We usually have about 120 kids that go to camp. And I'm not sure how many go to junior lifeguard. But we were talking with the rec director for the past couple of days and seeing what we could open up and how we could do it safely. So we're working on it. But, you know.
I just want to tell you guys, you know why? I feel like this is like an issue now that's not going to go away. So it's going to be hard to just say, you know, keep saying the same thing over. And then we're, we're, I feel like if you know anything about moms, we're not, we're, moms usually don't let stuff go. So I just hope that, and listen, you know what? If the parents can help and you need volunteers, we're also here for that too. Because I think we're a, a, a group of parents that live in this town that definitely will will step up to the plate. We're not asking you to do stuff and pay for stuff. And and obviously, all the activities we would pay for. You know, so I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't think it should be a money issue. I mean, what do I know? But I feel like it shouldn't be a money problem. We're all willing to pay and to volunteer and, you know, and I get it. I get it. We're in, we are still in the middle of a pandemic. I completely understand that. But then I'm saying that, and I'm looking at all the other towns doing all the other things. And it just, you know, it's very, very frustrating. You know, and I hope you can understand, like, that's where the frustration comes from. We're not trying to call you to annoy you and to make this meeting go on till midnight. It's just, it's, it's, it's very, very frustrating.
For all of us.
Yeah, yeah, well, okay. I don't, I'm not, I can't agree with that because I, I just, you know, and listen, you guys have other things to do. I get it. There's other stuff on the on the agenda. There's other stuff on the plate that may be more important than this. But, you know, for us, it's, this is what is important, our family. And why we live in the town. I mean, it's the reason why we live here. That's it, I guess. I don't know, because nobody says, and that's the other thing too, is like, no one says anything. So I guess that's just it. But, but
I know you're venting. I, I don't know how, I don't, I don't know what, what, what you want me to tell you.
I'm not listening, guess what?
I've explained, I explained the situation and and we're going to meet on the 7th, and we're going to see if we can work something out. And hopefully by the 7th, we have some loosened up executive orders by the governor.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Virginia.
Thank you so much. All right, I am looking at my list. And Mr. John McGuire. It's our John McGuire, possibly. Standby.
Yeah, I hit the hands up button by accident. Sorry.
Okay, all right.
Any public works questions, though?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll keep you on standby. Thank you. One moment, please. Okay. Looking at my list. Kelly, standby. Go ahead, Kelly.
Hi, this is Kelly Lang, 301 19th Avenue.
Kelly.
Can you hear me? Hi.
Yes.
Um, I just want to commend you guys for trying to do things legally and safely for the residents of the town. I'm a teacher, I'm a parent, and COVID is no joke. And I am very upset that we are still in this pandemic. I've been quarantined several times. My children have been quarantined several times. And I hope that we can do something with the kids, but I appreciate the fact that you guys are taking this seriously. This is absolutely no joke. We're all frustrated. And I think if you look at what other towns are doing, that's great. Other towns have cases. Other towns are closing down. And I really, really appreciate that you are looking to the safety of our children, because that is what's really important. And I just wanted to say thank you and thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Kelly. Thank you so much. Standby. And next is Nah, coming up on Nah. And standby. Nah, are you there? We'll give Zoom just a moment.
Hello?
Up, go ahead. Yes, name and address, please.
This is Seema Boll. I'm at 112 Inlet Terrace and 2 Inlet Terrace.
Okay.
I just wanted to, to talk about camp as well. I know many people have raised it tonight. I just wanted to start with Mayor Mark. What is your vision for the town? What is the legacy you want to leave behind? What is it that you stand for?
Understand the question. Oh, the, the, the thing that we're trying to do right now is trying to get this through this COVID and and trying to keep everybody safe. As far as the legacy, I'll let you know when we come out of this pandemic.
So it's, it's just about the pandemic?
Well, right now it is. I mean, everybody's frustrated. The council's frustrated, our, all of our employees are frustrated. It's a tough time for everyone.
Yeah, and
we're trying, we're trying to
Unfortunately, I've had COVID, so I, I have firsthand experience of how unfortunate and how terrible this is. But there are ways to continue to operate, as we have multiple, multiple people have raised tonight. Every single neighboring town, every single one that has a recreation program has found a way to be agile and operate, except for Belmar. And so that's why I asked, and I started with the question, what do you want to be known for? Do you want to be a leader? Or do you want to be someone who's known to take the easy road out? That's my question to you.
I'm not taking an easy way out, but I'll tell you what. I adhere to the governor's orders. I mean,
But it was
we're gonna, we're gonna do what we need to do.
Lying, and I don't
Okay, all right. Well, if if that's what you're going to call me, then this conversation is done.
Okay, well, I, the other question I have for you is, what are the plans for Taylor Pavilion? I know you have an RFP out for this year for that Marymakers can't do it anymore. Are you planning to have events there this summer? Because
I will answer this before you call me a liar again.
Because of the, the issue with the COVID. I mean, I don't see how you could really have any events there.
The RFP is for the Cruz Bay Cafe, is not for the Taylor Pavilion.
Right, but they had the private events inside as well. As you know, there are weddings there on the weekends.
Well, they're not there anymore.
Okay, so their plans for this summer are to have no indoor events?
I have no idea. When, when, when we figure out who's going in there, then we'll decide what's good, what they're going to be doing. Right now, there's an RFP, Marymakers is out, and the RFP is for Cruz Bay.
Okay. And my, my other question is, why are programs like Junior Guards or Summertime Surf, which are all entirely outdoors, why are they deemed unsafe under COVID during COVID? I just don't understand based on what you're saying. It's all about indoor being unsafe.
You're talking about what happened last year. You were talking about last year.
Right, so
And we had we have, we had no idea where this pandemic was going.
Yeah, now you do, which is
We didn't even, we didn't even know, we didn't even know what if we were going to be allowed to open up the beaches until the last minute. So
But you did. And you know what? We had record number of tourists. So you can figure it out when it comes to the beach traffic and how to make the beach work. But you simply can't figure it out for our kids?
I don't know how to answer that. We told you we're having a meeting on March 7th.
Okay, and I'd love to be part of the task force, so I will stay tuned. What I, I think would be great is if you guys could come to that meeting with a few different operating scenarios of what it would take to successfully run programs for all of these families that have spoken up today and that will continue to speak up every day until the summer begins, unless something is changed. And like Virginia before me said, you can, you can get away for the next three or four months pretending that these are the reasons you're not doing these programs are because of COVID.
All right, we're pretending, okay. That, we're done. John, we're done with this conversation. We're pretending now. So there's no need to talk to you anymore. Standby. Okay, standby. And we are going to Mr. Biffusco. Go ahead.
Jerry Buckafusco, 409 Fifth Avenue. I'd just like to say that on the, on the camp issue, frustration of all the mothers and ultimately of the children in the town about the campus. And what I've been hearing going back and forth is I won't call them excuses, but reasons that, that go from, there are safety issues, and then there are resource issues. And then there are safety issues, and then there are resource issues. Well, I'm staring at Executive Directive Number 20 dash 021 from Judy Pichelli, Commissioner of Health. And it lays out, it's COVID-19 childcare and youth summer camp standards pursuant to Executive Order Number 149. That document lays out what has to be done to safely run a camp, okay, from the Department of Health. So, and there's also one out there from the Centers for Disease Control. All right, so the health and safety issue is really not an issue if one follows the guidelines, okay? We can wait to the end of time for the governor to issue an additional order or to waive additional order, but we don't need to because we have this executive director, directive that states how we can do this safely. So safety is not an issue, all right? Then we get to resources, and I think that has to do with what the camp might look like. And I think it's probably practical to say that any camp may not look like what past camps look like, either due to restrictions on the number of children that can be involved. Or, or maybe they will. It all depends. But I think, I think the frustration I hear in parents is that, and the moms especially, is that there's really an impression of a lack of effort on the part of the administration to make this work. Okay? an impression of a lack of effort on the part of the administration to make this work, okay? I, I hear, again, safety, resources, but people want to know that everything is being done, that can be done as far as analyzing what kind of camps we can have. And, and we don't, and we, we're not seeing that. All we're seeing are statements from you, Mr. Mayor, that it's not going to be done until the governor, you know, changes some of his.
Well, I guess you weren't listening, Mr. Buttafuoco, because I did not say that. I said that in a month's time, if we're going to set these camps up, we are going to set them up to the guidelines. So I guess you were not listening very well because that is what we are waiting for. Is he going to loosen them up or are we going to set these programs up to the guidelines, which will be very few limited children compared to what we have? So obviously you weren't listening.
Okay, well, the sad thing is that.
I know it's a sad thing, and you're going to bow, Breatheus, and go ahead. Just, just keep going. I listened to it all tonight. I listened to it. We have a meeting on March 7th. If March 7th comes around, we will set it up right to the guidelines, and that's what we're going to do. What we were hoping that we could have, instead, instead of setting it up, he would restrict, he would loosen up some of the guidelines so we could allow more children in. But comes March 7th, if that's what it is, we're going to set these programs up according to the guidelines. That's what we're going to do.
May I ask a question here?
May I speak now? Anyone?
Sure.
Go ahead.
The point I was trying to make.
Anybody yet?
Now may I speak?
Go ahead.
The point I was trying to make was that unfortunately, that meeting came out of all of the discussion that occurred tonight. Would it not have been better for the council to have had a, a work session, a presentation on what could and could not be done under the guidelines? Yes, it would have meant somebody would have had to do a little work to figure out, you know, what kind of camp can we?
All right, so you, you're a mind reader now. Now you're going to let me speak.
Interrupting me again.
I don't care I'm interrupting you because we've been working on it. So in other words, you have a crystal ball to see what goes on inside a, inside a borough hall. Since you want to make all these accusations against us that we don't care, we don't work, we don't have the resources. I, I said, you have no idea what goes on in here, and, and now you're, you're, you're grandstanding politically, so go ahead.
I'm not grandstanding.
Sure you are, of course you are.
People would like to see what kind of analysis can go on, what are the possibilities?
I work with our recreation director and everybody that is involved to set, we're looking at everything to set these things up. Now you want to just keep going on it and, and bringing it all out again and bring it all out again. I get it, go ahead, it's political, go, so go ahead, make your big platform stand.
Well, if you wanted to be, if you wanted to be transparent, you would have done this stuff.
I know, let's go back to transparent.
Not behind the scenes like you always do things, right?
Today is February 16th.
Isn't that right? Keep interrupting me and I'll keep talking.
Sir, may I say something?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Everybody, take a deep breath. The mayor has been baited for over, over an hour. He's been called a liar, and I was called a liar a couple of months ago, so I understand what that's about. You may think, and many others may think that they haven't done enough fast enough. Uh, but you don't know the whole story. But in two weeks, three weeks, whatever it's going to be, at, at one of the ladies' suggestions, you're going to sit down and explore with them what the options might be. And hopefully there'll be another executive order to loosen the strings a little more. Nothing else can get done tonight. So my suggestion is that those who have been baiting him, calling him a liar, saying the same thing probably like 10, 12 times now, let's just, God knows, the council has heard you. Let's just wait a week or two. It's certainly enough time before June or July to get things straight and meet with the selected group and go from there. There's nothing else can be done tonight, and I think this horse is well dead. You can't keep beating this horse anymore. So that's my suggestion. It's not legal. It's just for somebody who doesn't live in Belmar, but doesn't believe that some people, not you, sir, some people haven't been fair in some of their comments tonight.
Well, hey, Jerry.
My point.
Mr. Bonifusco. I can tell you that we deal with this daily and weekly in regards to the guidelines and the safety of our children. If you remember what happened last year, Manasquan had to close down. They had to go to social media because they had a huge spike in COVID cases. Uh, other towns in the surrounding area have junior lifeguard programs. Their employees and their kids got infected. There's daily findings of problems with COVID in children as this pandemic continues. All we're trying to do, and I think Ms. Lang said it eloquently, that we care about the safety of our children. What's worse than having a program in Belmar is a child or somebody else dying from COVID because of us not crossing our Ts or dying our lives. We have every guideline in front of us. We look at everything that the governor's put out, the CDC, the Board of Health, and we're working diligently to try to get this program up and running safely. If people want to talk about that the camp is outside, if it rains, the camp is in Taylor Pavilion. It's almost impossible with young children to practice social distancing in a huge room in Taylor Pavilion. So we have to have contingency plans. If in fact a child or a counselor catches COVID, we have to quarantine for 14 days. That means at a seven-week program, we have to shut the program down, that people pay for seven weeks. How do we explain that we have to bring in a whole new group of counselors to try to salvage the program? So if everybody wants to, just take a breath, we're talking about the safety and security of our children, the well billing of our children. And that's why the recreation programs have not taken place because the proximity inside of a closed gym. We know that the summer camp is outside on the beach, but if it rains four days out of the five days, those children will be inside and unable to practice social distancing. We're trying to get ahead of this, we're trying to be safe. And I'm sure you're, you can agree with me that one child gets sick or a counselor gets sick, or a volunteer gets sick, or a first responder gets sick on something that we didn't follow through with the guidelines. That's a lot worse morally, ethically, and emotionally than people not being able to go to camp. So we're trying to do it methodically, we're trying to do it pursuant to the guidelines. We're trying to make sure there's no liability on our end. And I think that Core has got to prevail. And allow us to do what we have to do safely. And can I just say, I agree with you 100%. Thank you, sir. And that's all I was trying to say. If you can run a program accordance to the guidelines, then you're doing everything you can to protect the children. My point is only that if you're going to start, um, analyzing what can be done, it's great to have a meeting, okay? My suggestion would be though that why can't that meeting be done in public? So that the entire town can see what's going on. It could be done in a work session. What happens when you have a public meeting such as this, people's emotion get involved. And they're not thinking scientifically or by what the facts are or what the guidelines are. We know what the guidelines are. It's easy for somebody to say that we don't care about a summer program or the baseball or basketball. The woman stated that there's no baseball. Well, there's no baseball because there's not enough children that want to play baseball anymore. That's one of the problems that our recreation director had. There's a, a group of towns that get together for soccer because there's not enough kids from the Belmar-Lake Como area that are out into playing those types of sports. Life has changed dramatically because of the pandemic. We're trying to do everything we can. We meet with our recreation director. We had nothing but meetings about summer camp and all the other things that we have. I'd like to have the, the availability to sit down and, and critique every sing, single thing every single day. But there are real problems with real action and real, real situations going on on a daily basis in our borough. We're trying to fix the ills of the past, and we're trying to get through our first aid squad. There's a lot of things that are going on and we just don't, you know, we, we take it all, all to heart. Uh, we're doing it for the right reasons. We appreciate comments, but if you want to sit down here and talk about, uh, doing this out in public, emotion gets in place rather than logic. And we're trying to do it logically, by the book, uh, with, with limited liability. And, and first of all, we want our kids and our counselors and our employees safe. And God forbid, one of these children or somebody else gets violently sick or dies because we were not responsible enough and we listened to emotions rather than, um, uh, doing things the proper way, based on science, based on the CDC and based on health. Well, if you, if you, if they're not going to do it the proper way, or if you don't think you can do it the proper way, then it shouldn't be done. Exactly right. But, um, so you know, that's where I stand on that. My only point is though, and, and you hit the nail on the head. You're, you're doing a lot of work with the recreation director. You have a lot of information, there's a lot of back and forth, uh, there's a lot of, uh, concerns, right? But me as a member of the public, I don't know that. How would I know that? If, if we, can you still hear me? I'm sorry. Yes, I can. Okay. If we were to sit here and go through what we do on a daily basis, there'd be no time for us to do anything but, uh, listen to pros and cons of a different situation. The mayor and council are elected to, uh, do what they can for the town and make the right decisions for the town. We have, and I say it all the time and it upsets people and I apologize for that, but there's some issues that we're trying to clean up that have, that need to be cleaned up. There's all kinds of issues on a daily basis that have to be cleaned up here. So we're spending a lot of time on a lot of different issues. Uh, we try to be, we are as transparent as we have to be. We know there's an issue with the camp, but we want to do it the right way, the safe way. We want to do everything, uh, in the best interest of the, of the taxpayers of Belmar. And to, you know, continue with the, the amount of people that came to the beach, we're not stopping tourists from coming to our town. You can't build a gate around Belmar. We have a plan in place for the social distancing aspect. The public trust doctrine says that there are towns now that are being ridiculed by the media because they tried to limit the badge sales. Uh, we chose not to do that. We chose to abide by what the law and legal, legal aspect of what we have to do here in town is. So we are doing what we have to do for our residents, for our taxpayers, within the confines of the law. And, um, it's a, it's an ongoing battle. It's a, it's a, we have a lot of dedicated employees here in town that continue to work on it. And if we were trying to get involved with every situation publicly, we would not get anything done. There are, there are hard decisions that have to be made. And that's why these, uh, the mayor and council are elected. That's why the people work in this town, they have to make these decisions. And, uh, that's all I have to say about that, thank you. I, I think though it would go a long way to have the public understand what's going on. If, for example, perhaps maybe a different department head each month during a work session would just give a report as to what's going on. You know, maybe next month it's the recreation department head, where he or she could say, this is what we're working on. This is what we're doing. Right, and maybe the next month it'll be the DPW head. Maybe the month after that, it'll be someone else or the CFO. All I'm trying to say is that, uh, the more information that you can get out, and it doesn't have to be in a, in a forum of, of, of a meeting, but even if it's just a presentation, people won't, will get the feeling that something is being done. Because from what I'm hearing from you is that things are being done. But obviously, and I've said this before at the council meeting, we have a very small window into our local government. This is one of them here tonight, and, you know, and what else do we have? But what we, what we talk about here. So if more information were forthcoming, um, you could probably forestall a lot of these comments that, that are being given at meetings because of people not understanding what, you know, the situation is. Unfortunately, I agree with you. Unfortunately though, the mayor talked about the, uh, summer camp and the workshop, but because there's people on this, uh, forum with agendas, no matter what the mayor and council says, no matter what I say, people that are agenda-driven, um, will continue just to, um, belittle or disbelieve or, um, not, uh, really understand what we're trying to say because it doesn't fit their, their agenda. I can tell you that we're working on things that are measurable since we took office in January 1st of 2019. I hope to have that, uh, soon that we will represent, I'm sorry, presented a council meeting. But we're trying to get things out there, um, and trying to make it, uh, as informative as possible, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
All right, because of the hour, if anybody is, um, going to talk about the camps, or, uh, we've talked about it for over an hour now. And I'm sure people still want to make comments. If you have a question for the council, we'll, we'll take that under consideration. But if you're just going to keep continuing on this, we're, we're not going to take any more questions on this. Go ahead, John.
All right, stand by, no more. Or nah, go ahead.
Now he's dismissing everyone.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, this is Seema. I just wanted to say, I, I didn't mean to get emotional when I spoke before. I'm, I want to publicly apologize for calling you a liar. I know you're doing the best you guys can do under these conditions. We are just hopeful that your intentions are for all of us and to lead by example and to take care of this community. I do not think asking a mayor of a town what his vision for the town or what his legacy is intended to be should be a difficult question. So I just wanted to leave on that note, I, again, I apologize for the emotion. Ed, you had very excellent points. People are very emotional about this topic. But there were a lot of facts that were delivered to all of you in that letter, including the fact that the executive order about summer camps has been in place since last year to allow camps and.
Okay, I'm going to end it right here because I just said, we've heard you.
No problem, I just wanted to apologize.
We've heard everybody here tonight.
Good night.
Thank you very much. Stand by, got one more. And Carol, when you're ready, stand by.
Carol Moore, 1206 Oakwood Road. Ed, I want to thank you for talking so calm, cool and collectively just now. And I basically agree with you 99% of what you said. The only thing I would suggest, and I'm not getting specific on anything, but if there's a hot topic in town, if at one of these meetings, like the councilmen have each of their committee reports, if there are a small report, a five-second report could be said, we are working on the summer camp. These are our ideas so far. We are going, making more progress, et cetera, et cetera. Then maybe we won't get as many, um, uh, excited people who don't have the information when they call in. If a report was made, this is what we're working on, we know it's a hot topic in town, and these are some of the ideas we're pushing around. I have a feeling you wouldn't get as many such excited, uh, comments after that on that hot topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and seeing no hands.
April?
Got to give reports.
Can I motion to close the public session and adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.